Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Fairview District Board of Education, March 16th, 2022, 7:01. I am calling the meeting back into open session. We have already established that we have a quorum. I would ask everyone present to please silence your cell phones and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. So first item of business this evening is to approve the minutes of the regular and closed session meetings of February 16th, 2022. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Some of them.
I'll say it.
Okay, are there any comments or edits to the minutes before we vote? We're good. In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved. Uh, next item is to approve the payment of bills. Can I have a motion and a second to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $490,523.36?
So move.
Second, um, are there any comments about or questions about the bills? All good? Okay, in that case, could the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Bujdi?
Yes.
Mr. Iacakis?
Yes.
Mr. Gugliano?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, next item is PTA report. Do we have a member of the PTA? Oh, we do, good.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to let you know that PD had a successful three-day in-person book fair for our students and an online book fair for family members of the Fairview students. We also hosted a PDA benefit night at beyond on Friday, March 4th, and we had a general meeting on March 9. The upcoming events, which I'm super excited about, are the multicultural night, which is on Friday, April 22nd. We have a support staff breakfast on April 27th and teacher's appreciation luncheon on April 29. Our DI team is also working on introducing families of Fairview every week in our future editions of the PDA newsletter. That's all we have from the PDF.
Wonderful, and congratulations on the book fair, it was great. Uh, next is school activity report. Is there good news to share from the district?
I had the opportunity to attend the robotics competition last week, which was really exciting. The Fairview teams did really, really well, and it was fun to see all the kids coming together and competing with their robots.
I want to mention volleyball started last week's tryouts. I know that was an exciting because the last two years with COVID were more limitations, they didn't have the season, so that was something to highlight.
Good news.
Yeah.
Not that you're bitter or anything. Sounds like serious stuff.
Are you, are you seeing a lot of matches in the hallways now?
That's a brilliant idea, I love it. It's just fun, yeah. Everybody has the same chance, basically, it's just pure luck, yeah.
No skill required.
No skill required, not, you can't practice.
I don't know.
No, excellent, thank you. I just wanted to add about the, uh, the, the community response to the appeal for the supplies to be sent to Ukraine. I mean, I was astounded at how this community responded in a matter of hours, basically. I mean, it just was overwhelming, and I know we're all, you know, trying to do our best and do whatever we can in, in our own lives to support these poor people. And I, I just thought that the way the community came together like that was just excellent. It just is truly indicative of the, of the close community that we have and, and the big heart that this community has. And thank you to everybody out there that contributed.
One more thing to add would be that the boys' basketball team, the varsity team did pretty well. They, it was a really fun game to watch, and I think they went on to fourth place. Third place game, yeah. So, kudos to the team.
Great, all good stuff. Anyone else?
I'm going to throw in one, I don't know if it's coming up later, but I was able to participate in the Delt team with the admin and the teachers this week. And it was great to see all the hard work that they've been putting into that.
Excellent, I think we are talking about that a little bit later, but, but no, I'm glad you were able to participate and be a part of that, thank you. Okay, so, moving on to administrative reports. The first one I have here is our friends from Archon and Quinn are going to present to us with a construction update.
I think we'll start with Archon, is that okay? All right, great, we have George Demarkus, the architect. He'll show you the, the fun pictures and drawings, and then we'll get to construction management.
Yeah, I get the pretty stuff, I get the hard stuff, is what I get to do. And everyone again, it is coming down to the finish line as we're coming to the end of this month with where we stand and getting our construction documents ready to go out to bid for the new work here at Fairview. So as we get to the end, what we wanted to do is share with you just a couple of highlight reels. I know there's a lot of things you've already seen, and we're going to start outside and go inside. I'm not going to spend too much time going through it again, but in general, as you know, where we were ending, we have our existing elevations of our, of our addition in the existing building. We're on the right half, here's your existing two-story piece, the left half is our two-story addition. And the bottom is, we're all the way to the left, the multi-purpose room, it's part of the south edition. Really, this is kind of the, the final product of what we're looking to go out with. We are making a few modifications that we're, as we're playing through right now, is how this team room works here from a window fenestration look, as, as well as overhang, to make sure it works well with your procession coming into the building. There's a couple of columns that kind of get in the way of the sidewalk, to how much natural light does that really need on the east wall? That's too much light, so those are the kind of things that we're playing with right now, but most of the rest of this is kind of the, the final product. On the south side of the addition, we, we did take into consideration what the building's scope had requested during the parents' commission. Their, their target was to reduce some of the white ephist side of things on that facade, because it looked like a pretty big canvas of it. And as you can see, we kind of did a delineation where the, the front half stays as brick, which is the district office administration portion piece. And then once it switches to classrooms, we switch it over to ephist, just to give it a little more of an anchor of brick on both ends of that. But that is kind of how the, the south is looking. Again, a close-up shot, if you remember last time, we had a, a brick pier that was right here, a little, a little ledge that kind of blocked that entrance. And what we did is we removed that and added a step, so now as the average visitor is coming, if they want to do, go directly into that, that night vestibule or that vestibule just outside the library, they have a direct path of travel, or they can kind of loop in and out, and I believe that is, here's a better angle of it, of how that front is starting to shape up. We went through many iterations, the, the new interpretation has been submitted to the village. Tomorrow night is our plan commission hearing, which they, we got our staff comments, and the comments were things like, change this type of tree to this type of tree. So those are the best comments I have, by the way. Instead of them saying, change this to this, they're actually receptive of the plan, and they're very accommodating in the conversations we had with them. Most of it was forestry-related, if you could change one type to another, that would, that was immediately forward enough to our landscaped architect to do. The other was interpretation of parking. If, when we first did this, they had two different ratios, they had, or limitations. One was your day-to-day operations, which quantified 119 spots that you'd need on your site, to your largest event that you would have in your auditorium, and that was requiring 174 spots, right? So we designed your parking lot to 129 day-to-day operations, so we're above that limit. But we also got creative in the ways that you could put additional parking for overflow for night events, if you ever have that max capacity. The good news is the village got back to us and said they're only going to require the 119 and not enforce the other, so no variance is required. So the, so basically, we're coming to tomorrow's night's meeting with zero variances that we're requesting of them, which is, makes it a lot easier and smoother. So, uh, looks like everything will go great, we'll be back out here tomorrow night doing that. Then, as we go, I know we've seen a lot of these, so I'll kind of get through the outside and go back to the plan. As we've gone through, we, we've shown you how the site plan's going to work, the parking lot with your trash enclosure here to the right, having a swing gate that would allow the, the vehicles to come in and out during peak hours or during job off and pickup, and then turning that to your play area outside of those times. We've developed all the landscape zones between our classrooms, the back, the courtyard to the east addition, and then really the plaza in the front of the building. The walls have finally pretty much stopped moving. We are changing a couple types of walls, but really, everything is there. So we found a home for everybody, we're feeling good about everywhere everyone's landing. We've walked, we had our meeting with the principals last week, we kind of walked through everything, so we are feeling very confident in the way things have laid out to what's feasible and what's going to come out. Second floor, kind of show you this, that, that piece. And then, as we get to this, here's the fun part, so this is Patrick, where I'm probably going to mess up something up. But what we wanted to show you now, which we haven't really done with you, is kind of a couple 3Ds inside. So if I were to click on the multi-purpose, there is a chance that it's going to work. And you guys have all this, oh, sorry, you guys, this one? Oh, the green, I'm not a Mac person, apologies. This is really giving you guys a snapshot as you, as you guys are playing with what the interior spaces are starting to, to be. One chair that we met last time is trying to get a little more glazing up high along the top of, of this wall, which we're finalizing now to send back to the district for approval. But this is that multi-purpose space, so you could be in that space looking out toward the plaza. To your right is where the pickup and drop-off is happening, so you have a clear line of sight to anyone coming in and out. And really, our goal is to keep it simple, keep it large, but still make it a very attractive space, so you guys could use it any different way you can, right? There'll be projection screens that come down on one wall and, and the main wall and the sidewall, AV settings. Really, we're outfitting this to be a, the definition of a multi-purpose room for you. Here to the left, you'll start, you'll see that's the glass entrance, because the next in, interior I'm going to show you is, if we were standing in the lobby, looking the other way, and this is where I'm nervous about. Are you right? Sorry, I'm just trying to get that to be... Oh, okay. We pride ourselves in 21st century learning, if I catch up a little bit. But if we click on the lobby, this gives you a shot of if we're in that foyer going into the multi-purpose room. So this is the, the average guest or visitor to the building would come through this vestibule and into your main foyer. We've outfitted, we have areas for seating for students to be waiting for pickup, or just kind of a, 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 kind of a supervised gathering space before you go outside. This opposite direction is entrance into the, to the district office, that would have good supervision over this zone before letting anyone through those double doors and back into the secure area of where the pre-K and K classrooms are. And I apologize, sometimes I, I've been doing this and looking at this so much that I go a little fast, so hopefully this is all making sense. If I were to veer left and look this direction, this is that, from the opposite perspective, the multi-purpose room, looking how you get to look right into that zone. This room to your left would be a, an additional small conference room space where you could bring parents for assessment. They could watch their, their pre-K, their, their children play and see how they interact. But it also is kind of a more of a breakout space outside of the other zones, if you ever need any one-on-one teaching, small group meeting, private meetings, it's kind of more of an enclosed zone. And that is IT, so the fun stuff, so if I were to go back.
At a lot of different stages, yeah, yeah.
If I were to go down then to the next one, which is an average classroom, a pre-K classroom, and this is kind of where the last two slides are showing you, oh, you know what? Let me go to the next one. This is giving you the, the general layout of how these, these classrooms are, let me click on it. That's okay.
And while George is getting that going, the question from the board member was, have teachers seen all of these designs and whatnot? And really, these designs came from the teachers, that's where we started. And we've built it from all of the meetings that we had with them throughout the fall, about what they'd like to see, the bookshelves, the cabinetry, bathrooms in the classroom, out of the classroom, so, and, and then we have had some, you know, since then, meetings to see all of these different, the, yeah, these 3D ones not yet, but, you know, that's one perk of being a board member, get to see it first. Or for the, the low, lonely teacher in the audience gets to see it next.
Well, I'm having some technical difficulties, I wanted to show you, it's kind of an interior perspective of, of the kindergarten classrooms. I think you should all each have the PDF of this, and there should, when you click on that, it, it would pop up on any one of your computers. But really, the target was, we worked hard to, to make sure we created something that mimicked what your existing building is like, from classroom finishes to aesthetics, and really make sure we bring enough natural light into it. But every kindergarten and pre-K classroom has a team room that is right here in this corner, that allows it to open, so you could have little, you could pull into the classroom, have a teacher do a one-on-one with the student without getting them out of the room, but also use that for anything you'd like to use if a parent would like to assess their children in the classroom. Cubbies are color-coded with some nice green backings to them, and are, are, are designed to allow you to use the top as storage and at the bottom for their, their boots. And then we're doing a mixture of two different surfaces, a harder surface and a softer surface in those rooms, one the wet area, one the drier area. It's like a carpet, and I always love cells pitching it because it's really fun. It's a type of, it looks like carpet, it feels like carpet, but you pour water or any liquid on it, and it stays bubbled on top. So it gives you a teacher a chance to wipe up and clean up, so we look at the maintenance side of things to make sure things can be cleaned up easily. But in general, yeah, every classroom's outfitted with a sink, a toilet, and those team rooms, and all the other amenities that we've been kind of establishing with, with staff from a technology perspective. In a nutshell, that's, that's where we stand.
That's great, does anybody have any other questions? It's, by the way, definitely gave us a good idea, unfortunately, didn't quite get to see the last picture, but we saw a lot, which was lovely, thank you.
What I'll do is follow up, the links I have, I could just send those links to you.
Sure, yeah, and it should have been loaded on your computers, okay, I see some of you have it up, so they, they have it too, so we'll take a look. But thank you, it's so exciting to see how this is starting to, to shape up and come to life with color and finishes and whatnot. So thank you for all of your hard work, George, you appreciate it.
And I think Patrick, Patrick is the magic man that made it happen, so you're kind of getting a feel, thank you. So you can see the cubbies in the background have a nice little pop of color to them. We have one accent wall, marker boards, and teaching, and we're playing with adding additional writable slash tackable surfaces in them. But really, it's given you a, a gander at how those, all, all these rooms are kind of standardized.
That, that door that you're seeing, the sliding sort of door that's being changed, based upon a meeting with Colleen at the table and, and other people saying little fingers are going to be stuck in there, that's going to be a problem. So that's an example of the feedback, and, and that will be different in the final go-around.
Yep, that's the other.
That's why it's so important to have people who are on the ground, working with little kids, you know, taking a look at all this.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm going to step back for Jack.
Yeah.
Thanks, George. So I don't have any great pictures to show you, he gets all the oohs and the ahs and all the fun stuff, and I get to get down into the, down, down into the dirty mud and worry about construction and logistics and staging. So we've been having all of those conversations in parallel with what George's team has been working on, everything from how to deal with what's going to be happening over the summer here with regard to soccer and theater and the activities in summer school, and how we can cohabitate safely and effectively for the summer. So that as the summer comes to an end and we get school back in session, we can kind of stay confined to the areas that we're going to be in during construction and stay out of the school operation side. So there's been a lot of discussion and activity on that front. In addition, we're also paying a lot of attention to costs. As you, as we've all experienced, there's been a big change in the world in the last few months. And we saw some of that coming towards the end of '21, there's been a definite cost escalation with regard to supply chain issues and raw good materials, commodity prices. So all the oohs and the ahs, we're, we're going to deliver the intent and all the spaces that are there. There might be some things that we have to modify, change, adapt, adjust, to make sure that we can get it all for the available funds. So for example, one of the things that we've taken a hard look at is, in much of the early designs, nearly the entire structure of the building, all interior walls were built of masonry. And a lot of those walls have, as you saw, cubbies on one side, lockers on another side, marker boards, whatever, they're covered up. Many of the walls are covered up. So a more cost-effective way to approach construction would be with a stud and drywall wall, as long as it has that protection layer on it, where there's something physically that can protect the wall. So we're working with George and his team to make sure that as we go through the drawings, the, from the site amenities, how much, um, how much detail is on the site with regard to some of the decorative ramps, walls, planters, to the type of construction, as we work through our building, the details of how much glazing, where the glazing is at, to how the building is going to be built, the type of roof that's going to go on it, the extent of finishes, how much tile is here, what type of ceiling tile, every single aspect of the project, line by line, we're going through, cover to cover, to make sure that we anticipate some of the supply chain issues that are real, that we have to deal with, with construction, and the impact on cost. So all of that is going on in parallel, and because of the nature of the process and, and some of the challenges that are existing in the market right now, we're going to take a couple more weeks here to make sure that that's, we've got our arms around everything and be prepared to go out for bidding to the trade community in, at the end of the month, beginning of April, right around that timeframe, so that we can start to get the public bidding process going and come back with real trade costs of, of how, what the market is telling us the cost is going to be. So that's what we've been doing.
When you get those quotes from, from companies, are you pretty comfortable that you can lock them in on price at that stage?
Absolutely, yeah, when we, when we put the job out to the trade contractor community, we'll break the project up into approximately 26 different trade packages. We have to follow all the Illinois procurement laws for public bidding with, because you're a public agency. And there's a very regimented process that we have to go through. And once a contractor submits their bid, their bid includes a bid bond, which essentially is a guarantee, it's like an insurance policy, that will do that project for that number. Now, there's a little bit of a escape clause, if they make a legitimate error in their bid and they come to us within the first five to 10 days after the bid and say, listen, I made a mistake, I, I can't, I can't honor this number, but this is why I made the mistake. We basically have to honor that. But once, once we get through that vetting process, which takes a couple of weeks after we receive bids, and they come in and we sit down with them face-to-face and say, you know, we go through every drawing, we go through every specification, we go through our scopes of work, and they say, yes, we've got the job, at that point, as we recommend it to you, that number is a locked number.
Got it, good. I, I mean, I think that's going to be important, because we, we thought we'd be through this supply chain issue by now, but obviously, things are actually getting more complicated right now, so.
Yeah, they are, and so what, one of the other things that could potentially happen in this process, you know, if this, if this meeting was four days ago, oil prices were $140 a barrel, today they're $95 a barrel.
Yep.
So what's going to happen in the next two weeks? And so, for example, we're not going to do your parking lot until summer of '23.
Okay.
There's the potential that we may not want to bid that trade package until some other time in the future, because will the asphalt contractors really provide you a competitive price, price in April of '22, when they're not going to install it until July of '23? So those are the things that we're evaluating as well. So we don't want to, we don't want to make those decisions willy-nilly, but it, it's something that we are paying attention to.
Gotcha, great.
Anybody else?
Anyone else got any questions?
Is there any concern over timeline and materials impacting the overall timeline of, of the project?
Generally, the answer is yes, but specifically, this schedule, this project is a very attractive project to the trade contractor community. And the reason for that is, there's an incredible amount of work that's going on in the Chicagoland community in the next six months. Everybody's busy, all the trade contractors are, are jammed up, they have too much work for the summer. But what we're going to be doing over the summer is a lot of site utility work, getting ready for construction, starting foundations. We're not going to be getting into carpeting and ceiling tiles and light fixtures and all that, that's all going to come through the, into really '23. So we have the advantage of time on our side, that we can anticipate those things, plan for them, get the materials ordered. So if there is a long lead item, like casework is always a long lead item, which are the cubbies. You have to go through a shop drawing process, they have to be approved, they have to get reviewed, then they have to go into production, then they have to ship them here. It could be 16 to 20 weeks from the time that shop drawings are approved till we actually see the materials on site. We have the time to be able to accommodate that. Thank you. Yep.
Anyone else?
Okay.
No, well, thank you very much for coming along and both of you for keeping us so well informed, and we don't mind that you didn't have pictures. It was still really, really valuable information, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So next is superintendent's report for March.
Yeah, I will, like every month, just hit a few highlights. I am proud to say- Um, I am proud to say that our students and staff handled the transition from being, uh, you know, completely masks required to mask optional. Um, our teachers worked very hard with students to prepare them for that transition. And, um, you know, from what I've heard in terms of reports from the principals and staff, it went very smoothly. So we all really appreciated having that week buffer to, um, have time to process that decision. Um, and it gave parents time to talk with their children and make decisions together, which was really important. So many school districts didn't do that and just created, um, in my opinion, unnecessary stress for everybody involved. So, um, thank you for that. Uh, we touched upon the Ukraine supply drive. Um, you know, I couldn't be more proud of our staff member, Daniel Gillespie, who stepped up and spearheaded that effort. Um, Daniel was going to drive the supplies over to his car, to the location where they were going to be transported to the airport. And he ended up needing like 10 cars and multiple trips and it really was fantastic. But, um, seeing leadership and initiative in a young staff member, uh, was really, really awesome to see. Um, so I just wanted to point that out. On March 4th, we had our institute day and we tasked all of our staff with a mission. Um, and the mission was to get out of Fairview into the Chicagoland area and explore a museum of their choice, um, with an eye for how to bring it back to our students, either, uh, virtually or in a future field trip down the road. So we had folks, um, all over. Um, it was really, um, fantastic. We, we hoped that it gave a little bump to the mental health piece of things as well for our staff right now to, to get out and have an adult lunch somewhere, um, outside of a school. Um, but, uh, the feedback we got on that activity was really positive. I don't know, Mike or Colleen, if you wanted to, to add anything, but, uh, we had people at, you know, probably 50 different places from art museums to the Holocaust museum, to nature centers, uh, all over, um, the Chicagoland area. So that was really great. Um, and there are going to be some great things coming from that.
Can I jump in? Two questions. One, were they assigned a place or did they get to pay, they got to sign up to go to somewhere?
So, uh, Mike did the heavy lifting on this. So we, um, really, Michael Paca created a long, long list of options and we laid the groundwork, whereas, you know, would you need, um, proof of vaccination if you went to that museum? Would you need to pay a, a fee? Were there an educator discount? What did you need to bring with you, et cetera, et cetera? So, um, we did have them sign up in advance so that we could kind of see where people were headed, who was going together and whatnot. Um, but, um, you know, we provided some local, um, opportunities so that, you know, if transportation were an issue, et cetera. Um, you know, it'd almost be the same as driving to Fairview that day for work. Um, but, uh, yeah, they were.
So my other comment, I just have to say is it, that was awesome because it trickled down to like, I heard at my house from my child about all these adventures his teachers had. And it was an immediate feedback. So.
Right.
I think that was a great move on your part.
Yeah, we, we saw a lot of, um, indicators of it coming back already. Um, one kindergarten teacher purchased, um, a bunch of Hispanic Heritage Month books for her class. Um, she went to a museum in Pilsen. Um, and so those books are going to be shared with our students within the next couple of weeks. Um, so, you know, it was nice for people to get away from the building, have some adult time with each other, um, and, and see maybe something they hadn't seen before. So, um, we did have them do a, a product at the end of their visit. Um, you know, so we have a flip grid going with all the different places where they were at and pictures and whatnot. Um, but, you know, they also filled out sort of a reflection form as to how they would apply what they saw into their classrooms. So, um, it was just a great day. Something really different. Um, I will mention that the district equity leadership team met on Monday and Jackie joined us. Um, it was her first meeting and it was great to have a board representative, um, with that group. It's fairly large committee, um, very, um, representative of the various, um, grade levels, academic areas and, uh, special areas here at Fairview. Um, and during that meeting, um, we really dug deep into one of the recommendations from Dr. Dubiel in terms of creating a student equity leadership committee. Um, and so Jordan has really spearheaded that effort, um, and has developed a smaller subcommittee, um, to further that initiative. Uh, we're hoping to roll it out to students, uh, April or May, um, to really start, have a, a summer kickoff um, and a workshop for students to learn what it's all about, but then to hit the ground running in the fall. So we're, we're really excited about that. Um, I don't know, Jackie, does you, anything else you wanted to add from?
It was just great to see, um, to hear about the rollout and see everyone's hard work, getting kind of a plan for that going forward.
Um, and then just finally, uh, March is the month of, um, teacher contract renewal. Um, so we did a lot of work, a lot of conversations around, um, those, um, contracts for next year. Um, and, uh, a, a great deal of our time has been spent between, uh, working with our architects, as well as our construction management team, trying to figure out the logistics for the summer. As you know, we have a summer sports camp, um, you know, that we intend to hold and hope to, um, not have too much conflict with construction. Um, we also have a summer school program in August. So we're trying to work through those details of which parts of the project they'll be doing when. Um, and, you know, our staff and parents will have to be really flexible because, you know, the driveway might be closed one day and we're going to have to ask them to drop off in front. So we'll work through it. It will be worth it. But, um, you know, picking out all of the colors, all of the finishes, you know, all of the meetings related to this. Um, you know, to get a really great final product, it takes a lot of time. Um, so we've been focusing a lot of effort on that right now because really, once it goes out to bid, um, a lot of that is done. Um, there, you, you can't be making too many changes once, um, you have the bid process. So, so we're feeling really good about that tomorrow night. Um, as George mentioned, um, Jeff and I will be joining them at the planning commission meeting in Skokie. Um, so, you know, hopefully they will approve the project and then our next stop is at the village board, um, in April. So moving right along, any questions from board members that I can answer about the report?
No. Anyone? Thank you. That's great. Thank you very much. Um, so now we have our, um, committee reports. Um, first one is Ed Redd, which is me. And I did manage to get to, uh, the Ed Redd meeting, which was on March 4th. Um, Senator Adrian Johnson was there and, and she was talking about the various bills that she is, uh, involved with and sponsoring this year. Um, and then the Ed Redd executive director, Bridget talked about the things that, um, that Ed Redd is concentrating on. Um, the thing that there's various things, obviously they move into that, that, uh, aren't necessarily relevant to, to us as a school. One kind of borders it and that's actually, um, out of the requirement of the Perkins Five Career and Technical Education Act that was, um, reenacted in, um, 2015. Um, the, uh, the state is required to have a CT programming and career pathway endorsement program in the schools. And Perkins is actually now eligible down to fifth grade, youth in fifth grade. So it is relevant to Fairview in that, um, there may be some requirements of, of what is needed for a career pathway a program in, uh, middle school. Um, but that, that is still very much being fleshed out. So, um, other bills that are out there, um, the most relevant, I know that there is still work going on over the property tax. Property taxes and the PTL arrangement and the, the ability to, um, question the, the taxes and the fact that, that they actually want the schools to be able to be kept informed of any kind of appeals on taxes because that can actually affect the income of the school quite significantly. So we're definitely, uh, much more concerned about that one. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to add is, uh, Ed Redd is definitely hosting its 50th, um, dinner. Um, they always have a legislative dinner, um, every year. It's normally in January, but if you remember, they actually postponed it because, uh, Omicron was still very active and, uh, the whole point of it is that they're bringing legislators together from all over the state. So, um, many of them just didn't want to attend. Um, so, and because it's their 50th year, they definitely wanted to make a big thing of it. So it is now scheduled for April 25th at Cafe La Carre for the restaurant out in Des Plaines where they've hosted it the last few years. And I would strongly recommend that you sign up for that if you, um, I'll, I'll definitely be going. And if you contact Drew, uh, she will sign you up, uh, to go along to that. So it's usually a really, uh, interesting evening. Um, and we actually get to network again, which will be wonderful. Uh, so that's it for Ed Redd. Uh, NTDSI, do you have a report?
Yeah. Um, so I attended the governing board meeting on March 10th last week for NTDSI. They, um, currently service 18 Fairview students, like outside of Fairview, but they also service tons of students at Fairview. Um, so that is kind of our steady population. Their projections are in for next year. Everything's moving smoothly for their ESY program. Their construction is looking amazing. It's all getting very exciting. They're going through the same thing where they're moving classrooms in the spring to try and get ahead of something. So there, I, I mean, I don't know how they're doing it, but it's amazing. Uh, we had some great presentations at the meeting. Um, they have a new evaluation system for their executive director that we're using. So I'll, um, learn about that. And we had an amazing presentation by the deaf and hard of hearing team. Uh, there were three teachers and one on maternity leave. I know they service at least one student here at Fairview. Um, it was just phenomenal to hear what they're doing in school with kids. And, and most importantly, working with hearing students and non-hearing students and the equaling that, like leveling that playing field is amazing. How many of their hearing students communicate with sign or with assistive technology to the kids who are deaf and hard of hearing was outstanding. Um, they also had a presentation on the Bridges Program, which is sort of like the adult, you know, transitioning into adulthood and life skills. And that was fantastic. Um, and it was, it was a really moving meeting as it always is. If anyone has any questions about our relationship with NTDSI, let me know.
I was just going to say that, um, I drove that way just recently going to the dentist, oh joy. Um, and I was shocked when I actually drove down that street. I, I, I know what NTDSI looks like. It's this single story building on the right there as you drive up. And then all of a sudden there was this enormous building there. It's huge. I had no idea that they were building that big. So yeah, very, very impressive if you drive that way. Really, really impressive.
The amount, just the amount of, um, staff that work in and out of that building, you know, like there's, you know, five speech teachers working at one table in a hallway. So that kids have their space. Uh, so it's going to be so great. And they are such complex students that are thriving in the environment they're in. So I cannot imagine how amazing it's going to be once they have the upgrade. So.
It's truly an amazing place. If you haven't toured it, you really, really should tour it. It's a wonderful place. It's very heartwarming. So, um, uh, PTA, Diana.
Wasn't able to make the last meeting. Jackie did on my behalf, but, um, Kajal spoke tonight as well.
I, I think one of the things I wanted to highlight from the PTA, I've heard about the active, can you guys hear me? The activities, but there's a new initiative they call the family introduction, that they want to, um, but, you know, families who volunteer to introduce themselves to the community. I thought that was a good idea uh, to help kind of make new connections with families, you know, strengthen the community. I like that.
I love it too. That's great. Thank you very much. Okay. So moving on, uh, freedom of information, I can report that there were no requests this month. Um, information items and correspondence, Mr. Secretary, do we have any?
Uh, there were also no items of correspondence received this one.
John, good. Uh, in that case, we will move on to public comment. Um, first of all, I will just add that there were no online comments received. But if there are any members of the audience that wish to address the board on matters that are in the purview of the board, uh, now is your opportunity. Just as a reminder, we'll allow a minimum of 30 minutes for comment, um, if it's needed and 20 minute minimum on any particular subject. If you'd please identify yourself and, uh, you will be allowed to speak for three minutes and the board secretary will keep time and will warn you when you're at your 30 second towards the end. Okay. Thank you.
My name's Elizabeth Palmer. My kids go to Fairview. After last month's decision to make masking optional, both of my children received instructions from their teachers about how to treat people whose masking status was different from theirs. This training was really specific. It was age appropriate. And there were lots of specific examples about hypothetical situations, people with or without masks and what you could or couldn't say, so that you wouldn't be bullying the other student. And I think this is great. I was really glad that Fairview students were trained in this way to treat one another with kindness and respect, especially since we live in a culture where the adults are not always being respectful and kind when it comes to things like masks. I wish that my children would also receive such comprehensive training from their teachers about how to deal with other types of bullying that happen at Fairview. I can give you one example that happened in this last month. My older daughter heard a comment in a class that she was pretty sure was racist. It was kind of on the edge, but because of who said it to which person and it involved physical appearance, she was concerned about it. The teacher chastised the boy who made the comment over at the side of the room, but there was, like, there was no other conversation, no debriefing with the students who overheard it. And I just, it just made me sad. This was a missed opportunity for the kind of strong anti-bullying training that your teachers did so well around masking. So, um, yeah, I think I just want to say that I'm guessing that that anti-bullying training around masking came from the top down. Given what I know about the teachers at Fairview, I'm guessing that there was some pressure exerted from the top. I wish that you would also do that with other areas in which bullying happens. And I want to commend you for the actions you've done with the, um, equity audit report. There's still a whole lot of work ahead and I hope that you will wholeheartedly embrace all of those steps as well. And I want to give a shout out to, um, Jordan Kilpatrick. We've attended, my family has attended all of the community building events that she's hosted and set up. And they've just, they've just, like, they've all been outstanding in their own way. So.
30 seconds.
Good job on that. Good job drawing people in and sort of a safe. And I will stop with that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else wishes to address the board? Okay. John, good. Uh, so now we're just finishing up with our action items this evening. Um, uh, first of all, can I have a motion and a second to the personnel report? Our motion, um, second. Uh, Dr. Whitaker, do we have some other information on this or?
Sorry, my microphone wasn't on. I'm sorry. Um, no, I, I believe that, you know, everything was covered. And again, for the sake of the public, this is the renewal of teacher contracts, which is typical at this time of school year.
Yeah, this was all discussed in closed session earlier this evening. So if there's no other comments, no other questions. Um, could the secretary please call the roll vote?
Uh, yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoi?
Yes.
Ms. Downing? I vote yes. Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Ms. Boosdy?
Yes. Okay.
Personnel report is approved. Um, so second item is to approve the district, district equity statement. Can I have a motion and a second first?
So moved.
A second.
Okay. Um, did you?
Yeah.
Have any thoughts?
Yes, I thought we'd.
Yes. So in the packet, um, that you had an opportunity to, um, review the equity statement. I also sent it out to the board after the last meeting. Um, there was a couple of you who said you wanted to think about it and, um, possibly offer, um, further feedback on it. However, I did not hear from anyone. Um, so, um, I assumed that you were comfortable with the work that the Delt did to create the statement. Pending your approval this evening, uh, we have begun to brainstorm how to roll out the equity statement to the community. It's very important to us that this not be shelved, um, that this is an active, living statement that is seen and viewed. Um, you know, for example, um, I've already asked, um, Jordan has reviewed our, um, student handbook for next year. We, something we do every year, um, but Jordan has, uh, taken a look at it, um, from her point of view, um, in her role. Um, and that is just.
And that is just one example of where we'll be, you know, integrating the new equity statement. So that's something that will go out to every student and every parent. We are also in process of reviewing our employee handbook as well as developing a recruiting handbook for when we do hiring so that we do have a process that's in place. Another spot where the equity statement will be highlighted for those who might be looking to apply to Fairview and and work here. So there's a clear statement about what we stand for in that sense. As we review board policies, I know that was brought up at the last board meeting as well, that board members were interested in seeing ways in which we could integrate the equity policy and the language of the policy into board policy. And that is also something, once the board approves this tonight, we can begin looking at policies as they come through from the School Board Association. You know, if there is any logical places to embed this, you know, many of the policies are very specific to certain things and maybe wouldn't necessarily need that work, but there are some that will. For our students, Mike and Colleen will be working with our staff to walk through how we want this to be rolled out to students. You know, we've talked about publishing it on, you know, laminated posters for the classrooms, et cetera, et cetera. So I think you kind of get the gist of what we're talking about here. But we really want our students to have an opportunity with our staff, either through advisory or core classrooms to to read the equity statement, have discussions about the equity statement, what does it mean in developmentally appropriate ways across K8? And so those are the types of activities that we'll be embarking on over the next several weeks and months with our students as well. So there are other ideas. Nora had a great idea. How about yard signs? You know, so there will be many ideas that are brought to the table and and we will bring those to the Delt because that will be sort of our our group that is, you know, hearing ideas, helping us put ideas into motion, et cetera. And that group will continue to meet throughout the rest of the school year as well as the summer. Our next big event that we're looking forward to is our April 29 Institute Day where Dr. Dubio has been booked and scheduled to be with our team for the full day. And at that time, she's going to help us map out the various initiatives and recommendations that she made in the equity audit, some of which have begun to be addressed because we didn't want to wait until April 29. But she's going to really help us map out a systematic approach to addressing each and every one of the audit findings with a timeline, action plan, that we will then be able to report back to the board and to the community. So we're really looking forward to that day with Dr. Dubio. We've also booked her for two days in June after school is out. Staff will be, the Delt will be invited back to spend two additional days with Dr. Dubio to continue that process and work on those initiatives. So I think we have a, you know, really great couple of months lined up in terms of continuing to move this work forward. You know, we've been busy since November when we received the report and we haven't stopped and, you know, would expect to just continue that journey. You know, through the next couple of months, the summer and then in the fall. So happy to answer any questions anyone has, but really the first step is the board approving the the statement for the district.
Any questions or comments? No, I just, I'm thrilled to to learn that although it kind of does hinge on us approving it, which I think you felt quite comfortable that we would, that you've actually moved ahead already, that things are happening even before we've actually, well, before I've done this. So I'm really pleased to hear that. So if there's no other comments or questions, this is a voice. All those in favor of adopting the new district equity statement, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. We have an equity statement. Thank you very much for everybody's contribution, in particular, of course, the Delt team who are continuously working on all this. So do we have items for future consideration? The only thing I wanted to mention again was the Ed Redd Dinner that I mentioned earlier, which is in April 25. And that could be a busy week because in fact, the Wednesday before that, on Wednesday, April 20, which is when our meeting was originally scheduled and we've moved it to the following Wednesday. And one of the reasons for that was because that is the IASB spring meeting for the North Cook Division. And it shouldn't be too hard to get to because it's actually at Lincoln Junior High School, the brand new school over on Lincoln Avenue. It's literally across the road from me. That is on 20th. There's the usual dinner put on by the school, usually about 6:30 and a meeting. But there is also tours of the school from 5:30 onwards, which I definitely want to do. I really do want to have a good look around that school with obviously this school in mind as I'm doing it. The speaker that evening is Raph Matiere. He's an excellent speaker. If you've never heard him before, he's, he's really a good chap. So I would highly recommend IASB meeting on April 20 and Ed Redd Dinner on April 25. So a lot of meeting, but I think it will be worth your while. Is there anyone else? Has any items for consideration? In that case, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at 7:58 PM? So moved.
I'll second.
Could the secretary please call the roll vote?
Yes, Ms. Boosdy?
Yes.
Ms. Linoy?
Yeah.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yeah.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Downing?
Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming this evening. Good meeting.